Okay, I think we should get started, please.
Trustees Alexander.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Arnell.
Present.
Broadhurst. Clemmons.
Here.
Corbett.
Here.
Kotner.
Here.
Dambly.
Here.
Devini.
Here.
Eckle.
Present.
Erickson.
Here.
Fraser.
Here.
Gregg.
Here.
Hayes.
Here.
Henshaw. Huber.
Here.
Corey.
Here.
Lubert.
Here.
LeBrono.
Present.
Maser.
Here.
McCumbey.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Pete.
Here.
Schaefer.
Here.
Silvis.
Here.
Here.
Sui.
Here.
Thurma.
Here.
Calafaro.
Here.
Kamalis.
Here.
Brandstetter.
Here.
Brochus.
Here.
Ponti. Cook. Coppersmith.
Here.
Frye. Huck.
Here.
Junker.
Here.
Madigan. Metzger. Robinson. Raul.
Here.
Springer. Wise. Wolf. Wood. And Zimprelli.
Robinson's on.
Thank you.
Okay, and I would start, this is Karen Peets, I would start by just asking everyone who's not speaking to please mute your phones. It helps with this kind of call. So I'm gonna make a couple of opening remarks and then I will introduce the speakers and we'll have a series of presentations, uh, for this evening.
Karen?
Yes?
Karen, I'm sorry to interrupt you, this is Anthony Lebron, I wanna raise a point of order I'd like you to rule on. As publicly noted by another member of this board, proper notice of this special meeting as defined by the University Charter has not been given and due to the lack of a specified physical location, it is unclear whether it is being held in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act. Therefore, this meeting should be immediately adjourned and rescheduled.
Uh, this is Joel speaking, uh, Joel Myers, uh, without this being being official, I wanna second what Anthony said. What's the point of it? Uh, we have no authority, we cannot vote. Trustees must keep our comments limited. The debate is highly structured, five people are speaking or scripted. We're told a few hours in advance, we can only speak for a minute or two, and that's not fair. We're the trustees, I recommend we receive written reports, uh, for us to read and study in advance of the next formal meeting. And finally, I don't believe we can proceed today anyway, Roman No. 8, number seven of the standing order makes it clear that a meeting must be in a meeting room. And frankly, if we can't get good legal advice on a simple matter of what is a meeting and where to hold a meeting, how can we trust the legal advice we're getting on the NCAA?
Okay, does anybody else have any opening statements? Okay, well, thank you for that, I think I'll proceed with my statement.
Well, I'd like a roll, Karen.
I'm sorry?
There's a motion, there's a motion in front of you, Joel's second it.
Oh, we're, you actually, if you allow me to begin my opening statements, I'll address the fact that we are not voting, nor will there be any motions today. So perhaps I should continue. So, over the last few days, questions have been raised about the process in which the NCAA crafted and imposed, and the university accepted, what are unquestionably harsh sanctions that will have a significant impact on the university, its students, student athletes, alumni, faculty, staff, and other constituencies. Questions have also been raised about the Free Report, and how that report was used by the NCAA as the basis for its action. I had intended to call for a vote this evening to ratify the consent decree. Not because ratification is legally required, it is not, but rather because President Erickson's party had been challenged publicly by some of our own trustees. The leadership of the Board wanted to publicly demonstrate the Board's support of President Erickson and the university's commitment to fully perform and comply with the consent decree. We had hoped to clear up any lingering misunderstanding with respect to the Board's and the university's position on this matter. Given that trustee McComby yesterday indicated publicly that he has instructed his lawyer to refrain from taking any further action, a formal vote may not be as necessary as we had initially anticipated. In addition, we have a technical legal issue, which I think is what's being raised, that prevents us from taking a vote this evening. The university's charter, written in eighteen fifty-five, contains a provision that requires ten days' written notice of any meeting of the Board. Our bylaws contain a different provision requiring three days' prior notice. Because of this inconsistency, and because bylaw, and organizations' bylaws, may not be inconsistent with the law or its charter, out of an abundance of caution, we will not be taking any official action this evening. In that regard, I will also not entertain any motions this evening. Regardless of whether we vote, however, I would like to clear, be clear on one thing. I absolutely support President Erickson and his decision to accept the consent decree as the only real option in the extraordinarily difficult circumstances and the choices we were presented. It is my sense that every member of this Board also fully supports President Erickson, even though we may not agree with the process used by the NCAA or with the harshness of the sanctions imposed. President Erickson's leadership throughout this extraordinarily difficult time has been invaluable and is greatly appreciated by every member of the Board. On that, we all agree. We also agree that our fiduciary duty as trustees is to do what is best for the university, not just in the short term, but with a long-term perspective, keeping in mind our mission to be a world-class, multi-campus, public research university that educates students from Pennsylvania, the nation, and the world, and improves the well-being and health of individuals and communities through integrated programs of teaching, research, and service. After speaking with many members of the Board, and in light of the comments that we've received over the past two weeks, I believe that further discussion of the issues is warranted. I hope that by having this discussion in an open forum, the public will be able to gain a better understanding of how the decision on the consent decree was reached, why the university believed, and still believes, that it is the best alternative available to it. Indeed, I'm confident that most of the Board believes that it was the only real option, and what the university's plans are with respect to compliance with the consent decree and the Free Report. We intend to comply fully with the consent decree and the Athletics Integrity Agreement, still to be finalized, and to be a national model of compliance with the NCAA Constitution, bylaws, and its rules. At the outset of our discussions with the NCAA, we asked that the consent decree include language to expressly provide consideration in the event of the university's outstanding performance. We continued to urge the NCAA to consider such a provision as late as Friday of this week, this past week. The NCAA rejected our request in each case, including by a vote of their executive. We intend and expect that our performance will be so exemplary that in a few years, we will be in a position to request again that the NCAA reconsider whether showing non. Discussions with the NCAA are ongoing on a number of details surrounding the implementation of the consent decree, including the creation and administration of the sixty million for programs child sexual abuse prevention and/or assisting the victims of child abuse. We will remain in NCAA and will be making our aspirations, including our aspiration to corrective actions, clear to them. Indeed, we are well on our way. All of Judge Free's interim recommendations presented to the Board in January have either been implemented already or are substantially completed. We have a team of trustees and senior administrators and have hired and will be hiring outside experts focused on reviewing and implementing as appropriate Free's final recommendations. In addition, we have a team of administrators focused on reviewing and implementing the corrective actions required by the consent decree. And we have hired and will hire outside experts here, well. Conversations with Senator George Mitchell, the third-party monitor appointed to oversee compliance, and have promised him our full cooperation. We've met with the leaders of our athletic department, including our head coaches, to discuss the importance of compliance. They are on board and fully committed to continuing our proud tradition of athletic and academic success. So with that as background, the agenda for this evening's meeting is as follows. We will first hear from Gene Marsh. Gene is a nationally recognized expert in the field of NCAA enforcement, having spent nine years on the NCAA Committee on Infractions, including two as Chair, the nature of the NCAA, and review the discussions with the NCAA that led up to the imposition of the consent decree. After that, President Erickson will discuss the rationale for acceptance of the consent decree and why he believed that it was the only real option available. Steve Dunham, the university's and general counsel, will discuss President Erickson's to accept the consent decree. Ken Frazier will then discuss the Free Report and the university's plans to implement Judge Free's recommendations. Finally, Richard Edelman, our public and media relations advisor, will discuss public relations issues. After we hear those presentations, we will open the floor to the trustees for questions and comments. Because we are doing this by telephone, we will do this in alphabetical order, starting with trustee Alexander. I would ask that in the interest of time, and in order to give all trustees an opportunity to comment, please keep your comments brief and to the point. I will also remind everyone when speaking to be sure to identify yourselves. And with that as background, I'd like to turn it over to Gene Marsh.
Thank you, Chairman Peets, um, first, let me make a few comments about the NCAA. It is a voluntary membership organization. It sounds like a simple idea, but it has special meaning here. In simple terms, it means that if you step into the NCAA world, you're subject to a four-hundred-plus-page rulebook that has both constitutional provisions and bylaws. One of the most important provisions is Article two-point-one with the general header, "The Principle of Institutional Control and Responsibility," and here's the language that matters most. The institution's president or chancellor is responsible for the administration of all aspects of the athletics program, including approval of the budget and audit of all expenditures. And, so let me repeat that, it's the institution's president or chancellor who is responsible for the administration of all aspects of the athletics program. That's relevant to points to be made later on. In nineteen eighty-eight, the NCAA won a case before the US Supreme Court that involved the enforcement process. In that case, which involved Gary Tarkanian, the US Supreme Court held that the NCAA is not a state actor for purposes of application of the concept of due process. The like it or not, that's the law, that's the law of the land. Penn State is a member of the NCAA, so there's no opting out of the NCAA rules, the principle of the president's control of the athletic department, and of course, the Supreme Court ruling is the law of the land, separate from any NCAA bylaw or provision. So now, uh, let me address, uh, the week that led up to the execution of the consent decree and conversations that I had with people at, at the NCAA. First call was on Monday, July sixteenth, with the council's office at the NCAA, and the second call was July seventeenth, with the NCAA council and an individual who's involved in their governance process. And those are the people I talked to, uh, all week long. I did not have any direct conversations with Mark Emmert. It was in that Tuesday call that they first listed a series of penalties, such as the fine, scholarship reductions, et cetera. But they also made it clear that this was a very fluid situation with lots lots of strong feelings coming from the governing bodies at the NCAA. It was made clear that in their discussions, the death penalty, so to speak, was in play, that, that the Board was open to discussion of alternatives. We had a number of back and forths that week. We asked for consideration of a number of things that we thought were in Penn State's favor. That included that Penn State had commissioned the Free Report, that Penn State had waived the attorney-client privilege in part, allowing the findings to be made public, that the trustees had accepted responsibility for many shortcomings identified in the report for purposes of the consent decree, that the individuals involved were no longer affiliated with the university, Penn State's football program was not a repeat offender, having never been found guilty of a major NCAA infraction, that the penalties that were being discussed would harm many people who were not responsible, including current players, the coaching staff, and the Penn State community in general, alumni and others. Penn State would pay an enormous financial penalty, separate from this financial penalty that was being imposed in other venues, and that Penn State was going to implement most, if not all, of the Free Report's recommendations for reform and would agree to the Athletic Integrity Agreement, which included the monitor idea. The next most substantive discussion was on Thursday evening, and that message was loud and clear. I was told that I should know that the majority of the Board of Directors at the NCAA believe that the death penalty should be imposed. That was latest Thursday evening. And that's the first time that I heard, although I understand in other places it may, other numbers may have been tossed around, but that's the first time that I heard, a multi-year, uh, death penalty. I was also told that the NCAA Board thought that it was the worst case of loss of, loss of institutional control they had ever seen, and that an even greater issue on their mind beyond the acts of individuals was the idea of a culture problem at Penn State. And I know that President Erickson will address the conversations that he had with Mark Emmert, but I understand that some of those were even more intense regarding the sentiment of the Board that was expressed. Yet even with that, um, news as late as Thursday, we were told that the Board was open to a discussion. It was not a negotiation of an alternative. And, um, and that alternative ended up being the list of penalties and corrective measures that found their way to the consent decree. I was told to look out for a draft, I was told to look out for a draft of the consent decree on Friday evening. It turned out, it turned out to be, uh, uh, at the very end of Friday, really Saturday morning, depending what time zone you're in, um, we were able to change a tiny bit of the language, never anything relating, uh, to the penalties. We got some very minor changes, uh, made in, in several places, but none of the penalties ever moved. And the, uh, consent decree, uh, was ultimately executed, I believe, uh, Sunday night. And then, as we know, the NCAA held a press conference Monday. And then, on top of that, the Big Ten came in, even in the face of these very severe and imposed another financial penalty relating to revenue sharing. So, that's the timeline of the week, but I wanna make a couple of other observations in order to address, uh, concerns that I think people have. First, that I was told that the NCAA was getting reports from the Free Group, or at, at least relating to their investigations, every two weeks. So we know that, uh, the NCAA wasn't just, um, firing up after the Free Report was issued. Second, um, no one should ever characterize this as a negotiation. It was, and I used this expression two weeks ago with your trustees, where I said in the bankruptcy law, there's a concept called a cram-down, and, uh, it's essentially where the judge crams down the throat of complaining creditors what the deal is going to be. And that's the way that this thing, uh, felt. The people at the NCAA I spoke to politely, uh, listened to all the arguments we made throughout the week and conveyed, I believe, every argument we made to the people who were, uh, the decision-makers. In the end, as they articulated at page four of the consent decree, those considerations that they weighed had an impact on their deciding to go with what was finally spelled out in the consent decree rather than going to the, to the, to the death penalty. But let me also, since I'm mentioned, I think you can find at page four of the consent decree, the language where they described weighing these other, uh, things and deciding not to impose the death penalty. There's another really important passage at page four of the consent decree that I think a lot of folks are missing, based on what I've picked up in the media and elsewhere. At page four of the consent decree, under the sanctions, there's a paragraph two with, that starts with the following language. "As a result, the NCAA has determined that the university's sanctions be designed to not only penalize the university for contravention of the NCAA Constitution and bylaws, but, and this is the most important part, "but also to change the culture that allowed this activity to occur and realign it in a sustainable fashion with its expected norms and values of intercollegiate athletics." That language, which also was reinforced throughout the week, that there was as much, and perhaps more, focus on the idea of culture than there was actual NCAA by, bylaw issues. That language in the consent decree breaks the link with precedent as far as, as far as the application of penalty bylaws to violations in previous cases. People who are looking and making comments on precedent in previous cases are really missing an important point. It was a dominant theme coming from the NCAA throughout the week that what great concern was of the NCAA was culture. It clearly was NCAA bylaws and it was culture. So to the extent that people continue to try to parse bylaws and talk about precedent, they're, they, they didn't get it. I don't blame them for not getting it because they weren't there, but that's in fact the way things played out. And then finally, the choice that the institution faced was the, the terms of the consent decree or the death penalty. It was not going to be, um, going in front of the Committee on Infractions, and it was not going to be only the death penalty. That's now been made clear in several different places that I won't refer to, but what we got loud and clear, even post-announcement, was the consideration was of the death penalty with additional violations that would hinder the competitive level of the program when it came back to life. So, that's the stark choice that the university faced, and that's as much as I can relay now that I think accurately conveys my world as far as my discussions with the NCAA, so I'll close with that.
Okay, and what I'd like to do is, um, continue with all of the speakers, then I'll open it up briefly questions just from the trustees, and then we'll go into, uh, various statements that trustees would like to make. So if we could go on to President Erickson.
Uh, this is Rod, can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Okay. Let me, um, give you some background in terms of my discussions with, uh, NCAA President Mark Emmert during that week, and also, uh, some more information about my rationale for accepting the consent decree. I received a message to call, uh, President Emmert on Friday, July thirteenth, as I was leaving the Scranton campus after the Board of Trustees meeting. Mark Emmert indicated that now that the Free Report had been issued, the university should begin work to respond to the letter we received last November seventeenth from the NCAA following, uh, the grand jury presentment. Dr. Emmert indicated that we would have until the first speaker or so of August to develop our response to that November seventeenth letter. Dr. Emmert called me back after the weekend and indicated that both the NCAA Division One Board and the NCAA Executive Committee were shocked by the Sandusky trial, as well as the facts that were provided in the Free Report, and that an overwhelming majority of the Boards, uh, wanted, wanted blood, to shut down Penn State's football program for multiple years. He then said that we should put the November seventeenth letter aside, that things were moving fast and not in a good direction for Penn State. He indicated that the nature of the violations was such that sanctions would not go through the normal Committee on Infractions route, as Gene just indicated, but rather be taken up directly by the Board in this case, and that the Board had the power to go that route. Emmert indicated that our only chance to avoid a death penalty along with sanctions might be to opt for a consent decree that would have unprecedented penalties, uh, but would allow us to keep our program running. He noted a hefty fine, which actually became larger following discussions with the Board during the week, uh, loss of scholarships, uh, and a ban on postseason play of several years. He indicated then that the, the only reason Penn State might be given this option was the actions that the Board of Trustees and administration had taken during the past eight-plus months to replace the individuals that were relieved of their duties last November, commissioning the Free Investigation, and the fact, uh, as Gene said, that the university had no previous major infractions with its football program. Our legal team then began discussions with NCAA Legal Counsel on Monday, July sixteenth, and it was clear that the NCAA was not interested in negotiating the terms of the consent decree. It was a take-it-or-leave-it proposition, uh, and, uh, despite our attempts to push back on the sanctions as we learned about them, we didn't, uh, as Gene indicates, receive the draft consent decree in writing until the early hours of Saturday morning then. President Emmert and the NCAA staff indicated throughout the week that it was not at all clear that the NCAA Board members would accept the consent decree without involving the death penalty or penalties even more severe. And we didn't know until late Saturday that the NCAA Board was willing to go along with the consent decree option. As late Saturday, we learned that. Once we had the consent decree in writing, we pushed back again on the sanctions, but we were given only very limited latitude on, on some clarifications. During the week, I had kept the Board of Trustees' leadership, uh, Chairman Peets and Vice Chairman Maser briefed that there were discussions with the NCAA that were moving along very quickly, uh, that the sanctions were going to be severe in any case, and that the NCAA had, uh, said emphatically that any leak of these discussions by Penn State would take any deal off the table and the NCAA would go the other route. Uh, I indicated to the Executive Committee of the Board late in the week where we stood. And then later on Sunday, I, along with legal counsel, spelled out the, the difficult, uh, full terms of the consent decree. At that, uh, uh, call, there was a strong consensus on the Executive Committee that the alternative to the consent decree was far worse. And that we could take the deal, uh, which I signed then late on Sunday evening. Before signing, however, I asked, uh, counsel for their legal opinion, and they indicated after review of the university's charter and bylaws that I was within my authority as president to sign the consent decree. I have to tell you, this was far and away the most difficult decision I've ever made in my forty-year professional career. There were many reasons why I opted for the consent decree. First of all, the, the prospect of several years of a death penalty for football has overwhelmingly negative consequences. First, we would have lost all of the football revenue base that helps to support twenty-seven of Penn State's varsity sports. That would have had a devastating effect on our other seven-hundred student athletes. At the same time, we would have continuing costs for the football program, including operating and maintenance of facilities, coaches' contracts, and the cost of other employees with no offsetting revenues from television or gate receipts, uh, or sponsorship, among others. Secondly, an empty stadium for multiple years would have a drastic impact on the economy of central Pennsylvania and beyond. Many businesses, of course, depend upon the football season for a significant share of their net revenues during, during the year. Third, from the time I first talked with Bill O'Brien last winter about the prospects of NCAA sanctions, Coach O'Brien said first and foremost, he wants us to play, and he wants us to play on television, and the consent decree makes that possible. I can't thank Coach O'Brien and our football players enough for the character and determination and the team spirit they have displayed throughout this, uh, difficult time. Fourth, challenging the NCAA actions would have meant a high probability of multiple years in court while we didn't play football, and with a high likelihood that, as Gene Marsh has already indicated, we would lose in legal proceedings, such as the nature of a membership organization. Fifth, I was also very concerned about the possible actions of the Big Ten Conference if we did not opt for the consent decree. if we did not opt for the consent decree. I believe there was substantial risk that challenging in court the NCA sanctions, whether meted out, meted out directly by the Board or the Committee on Infractions. While not playing for several years may have led to our expulsion from the conference with all of the terrible effects that would have on our entire intercollegiate athletic program, as well as on our academic programs, uh, given that now so many of which are intertwined with, uh, other Big Ten universities through our Committee on Institutional Cooperation. Sixth, I felt strongly that the consent decree would provide a roadmap for us to make changes and move forward. Fighting the NCA would both take years and send a signal to the nation that Penn State is really, in the end, mainly about football. It will be difficult, to say the least, dealing with the NCA sanctions, but having the opportunity to move on has considerable value, too. The, seventh, the consent decree states that the agreement can be reopened by mutual consent of the parties, uh, and I believe our focus now should be on continuing the task of implementing recommendations of the Free Report, uh, working closely with the Athletics Integrity Monitor and proving to the world that we have the spirit and the dedication to emerge from this difficult period as an even stronger university. I believe when I signed the consent decree that it was the better of the two crushing alternatives in the most difficult decision I've had to make and I stand by that decision today. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Thank you, President Erickson. Okay, next, Steve Dunham, University's Vice President and General Counsel.
Um, okay. Thank you, Karen. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
So I want first to address the issue of President Erickson's authority, uh, to execute the consent decree, which has been raised in various circles. During the discussions with the NCAA during the week leading up to the consent decree, we looked specifically at the issue of the President's legal authority and the process for approval. This was not an afterthought in response to concerns raised by others. It was, excuse me, it was part of our analysis from the beginning. We considered both common practice and the university's legal documents. We noted first, uh, as in the provision that Gene Marsh has quoted, that under the NCAA Constitution, uh, Article Two, it provides as follows. It is the responsibility of each member institution to control its intercollegiate athletics program in compliance with the rules and regulations of the association. The institution's president or chancellor is responsible for the administration of all aspects of the athletics program, including approval of the budget and audit of all expenditures. By virtue of our membership in the NCAA, we agree to this description of the role and responsibility of the president and the institutional responsibility over intercollegiate athletics. This provision has special significance in this case because, as noted by one of the critical issues involves the adequacy of institutional control. We also looked at the university's own governing documents. We did this before the consent decree was executed by President Erickson. Under the university's charter, bylaws and standing orders, we concluded that President Erickson clearly had the legal authority to sign the consent decree on behalf of the university. The governing documents make the president the chief executive officer with all that entails. They grant to the president the authority for management and control of the university and for the establishment of policies and procedures for the operations of the university. The governing documents also delegate to the president the authority to sign agreements and contracts, which is what the consent decree is. Finally, these governing documents do have certain express exceptions to what is delegated to the president and none of these exceptions applies to the circumstances of the consent decree. This is further evidence of the president's authority to accept and sign the decree. Furthermore, the president did take the consent decree to the Chair and Vice Chair and to the Executive Committee of the Board for consultation. The Executive Committee is empowered to act on behalf of the Board. The issue of authority was discussed with the Executive Committee. Although no vote was taken, the consensus of this meeting was that the president should proceed to accept and execute the consent decree. He did so only following the meeting with the Executive Committee. Following execution, some raised the issue of the president's authority. The Board's outside counsel gave his opinion that the president had the authority to sign. I agree with this opinion. I have heard no valid argument to the contrary. Some have noted that the original plan to vote today is inconsistent with the conclusion that the president had authority to sign. This is not true. The consent decree is validly executed. It is binding on Penn State and the NCAA and it needs no vote by the Board. Whether a vote by the Board at another time may serve other useful governance purposes is for others to answer, but it is not necessary to have a vote for the university to move forward at its, is, as it is required to do with compliance with the consent decree. Having said that, the consent decree expressly provides that it may be amended by agreement of the parties. Further, the Academic Integrity Agreement is still being negotiated. Some parts of the consent decree may be ambiguous or subject to different interpretations. It is always possible and appropriate for the parties to engage in good faith discussions as to the meaning of the decree, how it should be applied in a given instance, the terms of the yet-to-be-signed Athletic Integrity Agreement and whether the parties should consider amendments in the best interest of all concerned. Let me now take a few minutes and address the decision-making process, uh, that led up to the execution. You have heard of the consent decree. You have heard Gene Marsh and President Erickson describe the discussions with the NCAA. I wish only to highlight one aspect of these discussions. The choice the NCAA provided to the university between the terms of an imposed consent decree and a multi-year death penalty that would also carry with it additional sanctions. This was a choice for the university as an entity. All of us, the Board, the president, the lawyers, others, all our fiduciary duties to Penn State, university, the entity. We have duties to make the best decision for Penn State, not any particular constituent. The university had, as I have noted, delegated this decision to President Erickson. He was therefore authorized to speak for the university. He also chose to consult with the Executive Committee and Board leadership. If there had been a leak of the terms, there was a very real possibility that the choice would evaporate and the university, the Board, the president, Penn State as a whole, would be left with no choice at all and would simply have the death penalty imposed. In these circumstances, it was the president's responsibility, after conferring with the Executive Committee, to decide how best to exercise that choice. He could discuss the choice publicly and likely lose the ability to have a choice. He could, we could lose, as a university, the ability to decide how best to exercise that choice. Or with the unanimous consent of the Executive Committee, in the best interest of Penn State, he could proceed to sign, which is what President Erickson did. In looking back at this choice, it is important to understand that the president was, excuse me, was trying to preserve the ability of the university to actually have a choice. I would submit that the president had his fiduciary duty and with the support of the Executive Committee acted in the best interest of the university as a whole, preserving the choice that best protected and served the university and the community. Let me make a final few comments about due process and standards of proof because these are legal issues and concepts that have come up in some of the discussion. When I do this, I do not want to comment about particular facts in this case, but more to try to clarify for the Board some of the general legal standards that apply here. There's been some discussion in recent days that the NCAA and indeed the university rushed to judgment enacting based on the Free Report and that we should have waited for further legal proceedings, including the criminal trials, to play out. Part of this discussion criticizes the Free Report for not having subpoena power or following formal rules of judicial proceedings and it criticizes the university for accepting the consent decree on this basis and indeed for moving forward with, uh, taking action in response to the Free Report. Some have said that these actions mean that due process was violated. It is not my role to argue the merits of this issue, but I do think there is a misunderstanding about the different legal standards of proof that may apply. Criminal cases are decided based on a standard of proof of beyond a reasonable doubt. Civil cases are decided based on the preponderance of the evidence. Businesses and universities, the NCAA and all of us as individuals and governments in widely, uh, important matters make critical, important decisions every day on, based on what they think is right, what is reasonable, what the evidence means to us and to them. Setting aside our specific situation, because I do not want to comment on that, but just in general, if we and governments and corporations and universities are faced with making a decision whether to hire or fire an employee, to buy or sell a business, to accept or reject a contract, to pass legislation, to make important policy judgments at the highest order involving large amounts of money, it makes no sense to wait for a definitive legal trial to prove a set of facts under a different legal standard. It makes no sense because burdens of proof are different. It makes no sense because most of us, most of the time, do not have subpoena power or the opportunity for a full judicial trial to determine all of the facts for all purposes. And it makes no sense because subsequent criminal and civil trials apply different standards of proof and as a result of that, they are not likely determined facts in a way that changed the current set of facts available to us. Rather, we take the facts as they are available. And as I noted, this applies not just to routine, everyday matters, but to the matters of the highest importance for governments, businesses and universities. Without commenting one way or the other about the facts as found by the Free Report, given the different standards of fa, proof and the fact that criminal law standards of proof and procedural notions of due process do not apply to decisions that universities and businesses must make every day, arguments that we should wait to act on the Free Recommendations or wait to act on NCAA compliance until after further legal proceedings, it's to understand this critical distinction. For the university to act based on the kind of factual development in the Free Report does not deny due process. Due process is a constitutional concept that applies to the government to restrict taking property and other rights in certain circumstances. It does not tell universities, governments or businesses that they cannot act on recommendations or take other reasonable steps based on thorough investigation. Uh, those are my comments, Karen.
Okay. Thank you very much, Steve. And I'd like to turn it to Trustee Ken Frazier, who will talk about the Free Report.
Thank you, Karen. This is Ken Frazier. I'll try to be brief because I believe a lot of what I'm about to say is well-known and, um, well-understood. As all, all people understand, back in November of two thousand and eleven, the Board of Trustees made an agreement to do a full and complete investigation to try to identify where failures occurred and what changes should be made within Penn State for the future. At that time, we were under a great deal of scrutiny from both external constituencies, including the NCAA, the Big Ten, uh, Congress, the Department of Education, the media, as well as internal constituencies, notably our own faculty. We then commissioned Judge Lewis Free to do an independent investigation because we agreed that it was important that as a prominent institution, we learn the facts. In that regard, we gave Judge Free complete discretion in how to conduct the investigation and unbeddered access to the university's documents and people. We intended, and we said this from day one, to make Judge Free's findings, his conclusions and recommendations, public. We also agreed that the Board would have no editorial influence or control or even any advance look at Judge Free's findings, conclusions and those recommendations he made as a part of his final report. We intended then and we intend now to use those findings to inform our decision-making going forward. We know that many good things, but to the extent that there were things that went wrong, we agree that as the Board, we need to look at how those things occurred and how to fix those going forward to ensure that something like this never happens again, especially as it relates to children. Now, in that context, the Board was very clear about what it was accepting responsibility for. And what the Board accepted, and we said this explicitly in the second sentence of our statement, is that the Board of Trustees, as the group that has paramount accountability for overseeing and ensuring the proper functioning and governance of the university, accept full responsibility for the failures that occurred, period. Put differently, we agree that as the organization that's in Penn State that's responsible for fixing anything that went wrong, we accept that responsibility for any failures that occurred. Now, because we agree to make the Free Report public at the very same time that it was made available to the Board, we are not in a position to control how others use the report or what they say about the report. And indeed, while Judge Free found many facts that we would not have known except through the quality of his investigation, including some of the seminal facts that take us back to two thousand and one, including emails and internal notes, the fact of the matter is that like any investigation or any court case for that matter, there are clear facts and evidence and then there are inferences, interpretations and conclusions that one can draw. Because the public got that report at the same time, individuals are free to reach whatever conclusions they want to reach on the basis of the report. From our standpoint, though, I want to be very clear that what we've done is we've accepted the responsibility to fix those things, which I think the report clearly makes abundantly clear, that went wrong inside the university. So with that, Madam Chairperson, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thanks, Ken. Okay, finally, Richard Edelman is on. He's our Public Relations and Media Firm Advisor.
Thanks, Karen. Um, look, the schools lived through three major news, uh, cycles in the last, uh, two months. Sandusky trial and verdict, the Free Report and then the NCAA sanctions. In all three of these situations, we've been responding to events, not in control of the events, but in each situations, we've been able to provide consistent messages and those are as follows. First, we take responsibility to ensure this sort of thing never happens again and that we are going to fix their shortcomings so we're a stronger institution in the future. Second, we're committed to developing and supporting specific programs to protect children on and off campus. Third, we have a plan to improve the school's governance, which will be informed in part by the Free Report's recommendations and will make this great university even greater in the future. This university has received praise in many quarters in the past two months despite these three big events, in the sense that you have been willing to hold nothing back in the investigation and to take very strong actions, such as the removal of the statue in front of the football stadium prior to the NCAA sanctions. However, the response by the university is now being clouded by some who are not aligned. Um, and in our opinion, this is impeding our ability to rebuild reputation. It requires that all of the Board face forward and align behind President Erickson. Whether you do a resolution tonight, to me, is, is not important. It is really important, however, that you have said that President Erickson has the authority to do what he has done and that you, um, have already released a statement of support and we think that we have to stop looking backwards and debate decisions that were made and cannot be undone. I believe if you do not, I want to put this really clearly, you will see a whole new round of stories in the media about board dysfunction, management turmoil. And I say this just at the point when you can begin to rebuild the reputation of this great university. From a PR point of view, this is a key moment. Moving forward, we have to remind people that we are, we are a great university, that Penn State will actually regain trust over time. We have a great heritage, talent and commitment. It's the beginning of the school year. It's the beginning of football. You have a whole class of students preparing to move in. Your own staff, your own students and even your football coach are asking you to take the reins and move forward. And in our opinion, it's time for you to be leaders and to stand by the decisions made and to be clear that you have a responsibility to accept what has been done. Karen, over to you.
Okay. Thank you, Richard. Uh, now, what I'd like to do is open it up for a brief Q and A session for of the speakers that any of the trustees have questions for. I would ask that you identify yourselves as you begin.
Hey, Karen, uh, th, this is Mark Dambly. Uh, I, I had a question for Gene, uh, Marsh. Gene, is it fair to say that the NCA's position was that the president, then president, failed to have the institutional control at that time and that that was the basis for their decision?
I don't, I, I don't, I honestly don't know if I could answer that without, without looking further. I mean, I think it, I reiterate, like, statements- I mean, I think I read the statements that are in the consent decree, and as I said when I spoke, the matters relating to the bylaws are detailed, and I guess you could say conclusions to some degree. Are detailed in the consent decree, let me see, I guess it's about pages three, more than anywhere in the top of four. And there's discussion, which gets to that issue, but then, you know, we were essentially in a process that pulled up one step short of actual findings against individuals. I think that's a relevant point. The language that's in the consent decree is clearly geared towards what is considered to be an institutional failing. And in fact, there are specific reservation of rights against individuals in the consent decree. There's a specific provision for reservation of rights, which I think answers your question right on the mark, and that is viewed as an institutional failing, but there wouldn't be a reservation of right against an individual, it seems to me, just logically, were they to be coming down with specificity on individual failures.
Thank you, Gene.
Other questions?
Yeah, Gene, this is Paul Silvis. I have a question for you regarding the vacation of our wins. Back in 1998, you know, there was a full investigation conducted by our district attorney at the time. You know, there was no wrongdoings found, yet, you know, we lost those couple years of wins. And then, of course, at the end of the season, when Coach Paterno was asked to step down, Tom Bradley took over. We had control at that point. I mean, what's the basis for going the whole way back to 1998 to then finishing the end of the year?
I don't, I don't, and I can't speak for the NCAA. That would be one for them to follow. I can only guess, and that's a guess. We had a discussion about the vacation of win penalties, and you can see from the language in the consent decree, I mean, they clearly believe, right or wrong, I mean, I think you, I could take the time to find the language, but they clearly believe that the problem started as far as institutional culpability and failure to respond to concerns. They believe that the problem started in 1998, and they conclude specifically in the consent decree that a part of their belief is that there was a concern, not to make a disclosure, in order to avoid the negative effect on the football program, which they believe would include recruiting, et cetera. And I don't want to get caught for speaking for the NCAA, but I don't, but I can read, and that's coming from the consent decree.
Other questions?
Yeah, Keith Moser. For Gene Marsh. What is NCAA's rationale for eliminating scholarships? I mean, we have these scholarships that fell off the face of the earth, and we've denied the education of students who, with their athletic ability, could have gotten an education. What's the rationale for that type of sanction?
You're not going to like it, but, you know, the blunt rationale, first, a significant loss of scholarships for institutional violations is not anything new. I mean, my, when I was a law professor, I was at Alabama, and we had a case where we lost, I forget the count, but it was something like eighteen or twenty-one, and then, you know, there have been recent cases where people have had just significant losses of scholarships. I think I'm right that there's one highly ranked school this year that's dealing with a seventy-five total instead of sixty-five. But it is clearly an attempt, and again, this is my language, to significantly impact the competitive level of the program. And that stated expressly, and as I mentioned in a previous form, I think, that whenever those arguments were made, and they were made with full force, about the impact of these penalties on people who had nothing to do with it, that their response is, and this is blunt but true, is, well, the alternative was no football program at all. So a football program that is significantly hindered in the number of scholarship programs, scholarships that can be given, is, they think, and some folks think, institutions think, better than no program at all. So it, this is clearly not the first case where scholarship losses have a huge impact on, I mean, when you give scholarship losses, you essentially, in many cases, are taking scholarships out of kids who are in high school. You know, you're, when you take initials away, you're taking scholarships away from kids who are in high school, and a multi-year initial ban does exactly that, and so I completely agree with you. But that is exactly the philosophy of the NCAA, and it's been furthered by this discussion that's come up recently of this working group that we'll put in place in October, a whole new procedural mechanism for the NCAA enforcement process, and new penalties. And there's an explicit discussion, nearly a page long, or half or three-quarters of a page, in that document, that talks about the weighing of the idea that these penalties have an impact on innocent people, and they acknowledge fully that that's the case, and acknowledge fully that going forward, that is exactly what they are going to continue to do.
It just seems they'd have other options, they could exercise other ways to do that instead of denying students' education. It just seems contradictory to their mission, to me.
Finding penalties, scholarship limit, I mean, recruiting limitations, making coaches sit out games, there are a whole array of things, but scholarship reductions have clearly always been the heart and soul of major infractions cases, and in every case, they impact, almost all the time, impact people who have absolutely nothing to do with violations.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Hey, Gene, this is, yeah, Gene, this is Al Clement. Gene, this had nothing to do with the infractions of the football team at all, and they had the highest academic level, so it seems like, you know, I understand what you were going through, but it seems like they don't draw any differentiation between the university and the student athletes. That's the problem I have with the whole thing. This doesn't seem fair to the student athletes, but, you know, you've covered that, I guess, as much as you can.
For years, I've covered it, including the nine years I was on the committee, including the two years I was chair, when I would have to make public announcement of cases, it was usually the first, or close to the first shot out of the gun that would come from the media or whatever, the school. And it's one of those answers that you give that, if accurately given, expresses the idea that we fully understand that, but that is exactly what we intend. And so what you get-
But that always, I'm sorry, but that usually comes from NCAA infractions. There was no NCAA infraction here.
Well, there was an NCAA infraction, I mean, if you read the consent decree, we only get in debate about that, I guess, but clearly, at a minimum, they believe there was a loss of institutional control and unethical conduct. I don't think anyone could read the consent decree and not think that that's what they thought. But there's also then this other culture theme. And also, as I said before, it, to say, I think the word, in the week that I talked to those folks, the word unprecedented got to be used so much that it just started to rub me raw, because it seemed like you could have sentenced without use of the word. And that's exactly where we are here. There's no critter like this, and this is a completely different critter than has ever come along before, and these penalties are greater than anything that's ever come along before. And that's what breaks the link with, to the extent there's any logic in the past that scholarships wound innocent people, in this case, that logic is broken even further because they make it clear that their great concern, or I think even a greater concern than by law issues, was culture. So it, I don't disagree with everything, no one could disagree with everything you say about how it negatively impacts, and I know you've been very concerned, negatively impacts people who were not responsible, and you've been greatly concerned about the critical mass being to the point where it could affect the health and safety of players. And I promise you, we, I promise you, we with force made those arguments, and then here we are today.
Gene, this is Ira Louber. Can I ask you a question? You? Gene?
Yes, sir. I was just getting a whole bunch of background notes, but now you're clear as well.
Thank you. Just a question. I know that members of the Board have asked the team and yourself to go back to the NCAA and see previous to today if we could get any leniency. Can you speak to any of that and what happened?
Well, we had a discussion, I think this was referred to in some of the earlier comments from Chairman Pease, I believe, that we had a discussion with the NCAA. First, we had a discussion during the week, that could there be any, what people would call a re opener? In other words, maybe two years, couldn't go ahead and post the idea of getting, two years down the road, maybe getting a looksee at where we were and maybe get some relief? And we argued that forcefully and got back a no answer. The no answer was based on the idea that they believed that the culture problem would take more than a couple of years to fix. We more recently went back to them with the same hope and argument and got the same answer. So we had some hope, maybe going forward, that in the AIA and the monitoring agreement, there might be a little gift there, but at least for the moment, we've got what we've got. And I would also say probably, that in the NCAA infractions process regarding penalties, there has never been, up to this point, although this thing we're dealing with is its own critter, there has never been time off for good behavior. That is a concept, does not exist, even in cases where the Committee on Infractions imposed like a ten-year show cause against the coach, which is, in many respects, ten years of you're not going to be able to coach. There's no concept of time off for good behavior, either in individual penalties or institutional penalties. So it's fair and right to ask, and it is consistent on their part to say, at least as to these penalties, that they're not going to grant that as they speak now. We, even President Emmer said at the press conference, I believe, that the NCAA is always open to new information, if new information develops, but we've asked, I think it's important to understand that your lawyers, your in-house counsel and your outside counsel, Reed Smith, have been fierce advocates, and they, and this institution, through your president, has raised all of these arguments, not just once, and got turned back, but multiple times, and got turned back. And that's a fact.
Gene, this is Anthony Labrano. I don't recall hearing, when did we actually engage you?
Ah, let me see. I think it was about the day, I'd have to go back and look, but I think it was about the day that the Free Report became public. I don't know when it was. I'm not sure. Have to look. It's right at the time of about the Free Report.
Thank you.
Hey, Gene, this is Paul Silvi. If I understood Rod correctly, let's say, we're not going to take this, we're going to appeal this, we're going to sue him or whatever, put you guys on top of the NCAA. Would we, it sounds like, though, if we decided to do this, they could keep us from playing football then, they'd shut us down until a court decided, you know, what the-
I don't know. I don't know how, I don't know how that would go. I don't know how that would go.
If we decided to battle this, they could shut us down, and then we'd have to wait years until a court decided.
I just don't know how that would go.
Or it could be the opposite. This is Joel. First, let me say that I have great respect for Rod and Karen, and all the other Board members here are, have worked hard, and they're very dedicated to Penn State, which is a great institution. A couple of points. The statement that the Board issued right after the Free Report came out was not passed. The Board doesn't do anything official without voting, because it's the corporate authority. So we have not accepted the accuracy of the Free Report. And simply because we're working and implementing various procedures, doesn't mean the Board accepts that all of the Free Report is fact. And we never anticipated the NCAA or any other body, like accreditation agencies, would use it against us. The report is not proven. And I've, as I've stated my email to the Board, we've not received full background on all aspects of it, we have committees working on various aspects of it, the administration and so on, and we all noticed that some parts of the Free Report have come under attack for a variety of reasons. So I don't believe we can accept the Free Report for the purpose of the consent decree imposed by the NCAA, and then turn away any recommendations within the Free Report. So a vote, before a vote on the consent decree imposed by the NCAA, either now or in the future, we need a full review, discussion, and debate by the Board and by these committees, and we need a model. We need to see what the impact of accepting the Free Report in total will have on all kinds of economic effects, student, educational employment prospects, the university's fiscal affairs, potential accreditation of the institution, alumni and community effects, federal research dollars, turnover of faculty and staff, football revenue, impact on other sports, future enrollment, pending, future lawsuits, state and federal support for the institution, and so on. And following the conclusion of that modeling, then we'd be in a position to receive a full report and figure out, too, if there was improper or illegal coercion brought to bear on the university to extract this document. Questions about threats, we heard about these, to prevent the president from bringing a discussion to the Board, which in itself would violate a major Free Report recommendation. And we need a study and report by the administration and attorneys detailing what effect the vote to accept the consent decree imposed by the NCAA would have on the university's fiscal affairs, and the wide ranging, and major. And I've mentioned these previously. So I think this is important. These are the kind of things we need to know the answer to before accepting any part of the Free Report and binding the university. Now, the Board will aware of the email that I shared, and I shared this with some of my constituents, and I've been inundated with nearly 1,000 emails in the past few days. And these are our alumni. They wrote incredibly passionate and lengthy comments, including one from a policeman serving in Afghanistan. And they're ninety-nine and a half percent against ratification. And we need to think through what we're doing here. These are our alumni and friends who fund and support Penn State.
Hey, thank you. Thanks, Joel. Other comments or questions? I think we could take one more question, then we need to move-
Yeah, Karen, one, this is Al again. I don't, I want to beat a dead horse here, Gene, but let me ask you something. This is all, all seems to relate back to the culture, mainly the culture. And what if these trials come out, and we find out that there wasn't, it really didn't relate to the football program, the culture, as much as they're pinning on us? I mean, it could be a big change in that. Does that give us a chance to go back to the NCAA at all?
Well, I mean, the NCAA made its decision based on the Free Report in part. It also, as is stated in the consent decree, speaks to the grand jury report. And they note that, I think there were, what, 430 interviews conducted and access to hundreds and thousands, if not millions, of emails, et cetera. And this relates to the point that Steve Dunham made a while ago, and that is that the standard for the NCAA and the standard for in civil matters and decision-making by universities is quite different than criminal matters. And in fact, I would say that the NCAA standard for basis of findings is even lower than in the civil courts. The bylaw provision 32883 says, and I know we're not dealing with the Committee on Infractions, but people keep liking to talk about the NCAA as though it's one great big entity. Here's the standard. "The Committee on Infractions shall base its findings on information presented to it that it determines to be credible, persuasive, and of a kind on which reasonably prudent persons rely in the conduct of serious affairs." I promise you, after being on the committee nine years, that comes down to listen to people on each side and decide if you think it happened. It's a low standard. It's not terribly low, but it's, who do you believe? So what the future brings in these criminal proceedings, I don't know. Whether it causes the NCAA to change its position, I seriously doubt it.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. So now, what we're going to do is just go through with various trustees, just because there's so many of us having a chance to say what they think. And I think we will begin with Mary Ann Alexander.
Yes, thanks. You've already told me who I am, so I don't have to say that. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I want to make my position very clear. I strongly endorse President Erickson's signing of the dissent decree, dissent decree. He clearly had the authority to do so, and in so doing, saved our university from a far worse fate in the form of a death penalty for our football program. He deserves our- He deserves our gratitude and praise for acting in Penn State's interests. I also believe we're extremely fortunate to have Rod Erickson at the helm of our university at this critical time. Not only is he widely respected in American higher education nationally, but is very trusted and respected by Penn State's distinguished faculty. His courage and steady hand have steered us through treacherous waters since November, and I continue to have unflinching faith in President Erickson. I urge all of us to move forward under his leadership for the sake of the entire Penn State community now and in the future. Thanks for this opportunity.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Mary Ann. Okay. Call on trustee Allen.
Yes, I'll be very brief here. Although I feel that the NCAA act is beyond their authority, uh, I support the decision by the executive committee authorizing President Erickson to sign the consent decree in light of the alternative as was presented. President Erickson has my full support.
Thank you. Trustee Arnell.
Yes, thank you very much. I fully support the action taken by President Erickson, made under the authority that's clear under the charter and the bylaws of the university. And in consultation with the chairman and vice chairman of the board of trustees, and with the full support of the executive committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Broadhurst.
Is not on the line.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Clemens.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I'd like to, uh, support Rod, uh, I, I back up Mary Ann's statement totally. And the only issue I have again is, is the way the NCAA has, uh, uh, come down on the, uh, on the student athletes. But totally support Rod and what he's done.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Trustee Corbett.
Yes, thank you. I want to make sure that people understand that are listening to this, Penn State is, has been, and will be a world-class learning and research institution. Clearly mistakes have been made, and we must learn from those mistakes. President Erickson faced a dilemma of two very undesirable choices. He chose, I think correctly, the lesser of the two severe punishments. The NCAA handed down, as G. Marsh said, unprecedented sanctions against Penn State University that I believe went beyond the mission and oversight authority of the organization, but that argument is for another day. It became clear that the university administration, in my mind, did everything within its power to work to mitigate the damage to Penn State, the region of central Pennsylvania and its economy, and to the Commonwealth. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Corbett. Trustee Kotner.
Yeah, I support, uh, Rod Erickson also through his very difficult decision. I also subscribe, subscribe to the duty of loyalty and will always be supportive of our university. I just don't, I can't put my arms around how harsh the penalties were, and that's about it.
Thank you. Trustee Dambly.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, I, I want to publicly state my wholehearted support, uh, for President Erickson as leader of Penn State and his handling of the NCAA matter, and specifically his authority to execute the consent decree. Leadership requires individuals to make very difficult decisions under very difficult circumstances. And I think we've learned this evening, uh, the university had very limited options, and I believe President Erickson, with the consultation of the executive committee and the chair and the vice chair, uh, chose the right and made the right decision. I know all of us, including Rod, believe that the sanctions are very, very harsh, but also believe that, that many of us, it's now time to move forward. We'd need to move this great university forward, restore its glory. And I don't think we can do it, uh, on our own. I think it's, uh, I, I think it's, uh, we got a lot of work ahead of us, and, and I want to encourage everybody on the phone who's listening and who's not necessarily able to participate verbally, to encourage all of us, students, the faculty, staff, the alumni, to look forward, not back, and help us restore the roar here.
Thank you. Trustee Devini.
Yes, I also support President Rod Erickson in our executive committee. I will not second guess the decisions that they were forced to make because of the NCAA. As Chairman Pete and Steve Dunham acknowledged tonight, it is not legally necessary to ratify the dissent decree since President Erickson had legal authority to enter into the consent decree. My concern, and it is a narrow one, is that I do not want any decision I make to ratify the consent decree to be construed as an acceptance that the full board should not be consulted on certain issues in the future because of a concern of the inability of our board members to abide by our duty to maintain confidentiality. This concern, though, arises out of the demands of the NCAA, not of our board. As we proceed to address these difficult issues moving forward, I keep in mind the words of Coach O'Brien. We all have to come together and realize why we're in the position we're in. We have to. We have to stop arguing about it. We have to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Eckle.
I firmly believe our commitment must be to our land grant mission, our ninety-five thousand talented students and student athletes, as well as our exceptional and dedicated faculty. It is my belief that we must move forward, continuing our historic commitment to education and research for the benefit of every Penn State student and every Pennsylvanian. It is critical that we unite as one behind the courageous leadership of our president, Rod Erickson. Indeed, as he leads this great university in a time of unprecedented challenge, I'm confident in the future of this great university because of his leadership and the board's leadership and the entire Penn State family's commitment to an even better future tomorrow.
Thank you. I don't know if trustee Erickson would like to add anything to his prior remarks. Okay, trustee Frazier, would you like to add anything to your prior remarks?
Yes, very briefly, Madam Chairman. I, I won't repeat what others have said, other than I unequivocally support our president as he deals with an incredibly difficult and complex and unprecedented dilemma. I'd like to make two quick points that have not come up so far. I want to ask fundamentally for all of the board members to reflect on the fundamental question I Penn State has for trustees and trustees. I submit that the reason why we have a board of trustees is because the university faces issues of governance that are often extraordinarily complex with solutions that are hardly cut and dried. For that reason, we need to remember the importance that debate and collective action and decision making are preferable to the mindset of any one individual trustee. Secondly, I want to make the point that while we recognize that mistake and that we need to move forward, we also need to recognize that many of our constituents, and in particular, our alums, are in pain. They often believe that by agreeing to these sanctions, we are accepting the most unfair and slandered public portrayals of Penn State, our football program, and others. They feel in short that this is a fundamental unfair attack on our integrity. So in doing what we need to do to serve the football program going forward, we should be mindful of making it clear that we believe this is a great institution, notwithstanding certain failures which we are obliged to correct going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Greg.
Uh, I, can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, I have voiced my support for President Erickson in the past. I continue to support him and the executive board. Uh, in my travels, I meet a lot of people who are not so friendly to Penn State, and, uh, according to them, we may, should have gotten, uh, harsh, more harsh penalty, but however, I think that, uh, we need to move forward and, uh, I support President Erickson and, and the board.
Thank you. Trustee Hayes.
Uh, thank you, Karen. I've known Rod Erickson since he first came to Penn State as a faculty member. I had the distinct pleasure of interacting with Rod at that time in my previous life, uh, in public office. And from that time forward through provost and now president, uh, there is no question as to why Rod Erickson has risen to the plateau that he has. He is without any doubt a good acumen addition. He's an honorable man, and he was faced with impossible alternatives. There was not some magical, easy done way through this thicket. And I support Rod and, and what he's doing. Karen, if I could, could I just ask Steve Dunham one quick question?
Yes, please.
Uh, Steve, uh, did I understand you previously to say that we're still going through the query investigation and they will be returning to campus tomorrow?
Uh, yes.
Uh, will you be sure to keep the board apprised of the, the actions and updates as we go forward in that, uh, yet pending investigation, please?
Yes, we will do so.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Sam. Trustee Hens. Okay, trustee Huber.
Yes, thank you, Karen. I fully support President Erickson in his decision to accept the consent decree. I believe he had the authority to sign the agreement on behalf of the university, and that what he signed was the best possible choice of a bad situation. It was clear that the alternative would have had much more serious consequences to all of our athletes as well as the central Pennsylvania economy. Because we're a member of the NCAA, we have to abide by their decision, even though we feel it's unjust. Uh, I think we've spent way too much time going over the same ground again and again. It's time to move forward and continue making the changes we need to make and spend our time and energy in a productive direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Corrie.
Thank you, Chairman Pete. I fully support the actions of President Erickson, who I believe acted in the best interest of the university when faced with two incredibly difficult options to choose from. The fairness of the sanctions by the NCAA are highly debatable, but I am confident that our student athletes will surprise the nation with their sportsmanship and honorable play. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lubert.
Yes, uh, as I supported President Erickson when we, when he agreed to take over as president in a very difficult time back in November, his, my, my continued support for him is unwavering. I, like many others, do feel however, that the sanctions were very harsh, uh, but that's what, given that and the debate that's taken place, we need to all come together and move ahead at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Labrano.
Thank you, Karen. First, I have the utmost respect for President Erickson. I do believe he acted in what he felt was the best interest of Penn State. However, as I have already stated publicly, I am deeply disappointed with the process by which Penn State agreed to the consent decree. Specifically, as a trustee, I was excluded from that process, yet our new head football coach was consulted. To me, that seems rather ironic. Second, the board, the board of trustees has been told by legal counsel that the NCAA relied upon both the grand jury presentment and the free report. Today I heard for the first time that Mark Emmer also relied upon information from the Sandusky trial, though I am unsure as to how he received that information. As for the grand jury presentment, we now know of its substantive flaws. I don't need to repeat them here. With respect to the free report, its conclusions, in my opinion, are based on facts, not in evidence. In fact, the full board never accepted the findings of the free report. With respect to the free report, in my opinion, its findings are so inconsistent with reality that I find them to be intentionally inflammatory. For example, Penn State athletics has served as a model program for other NCAA member institutions, contrary to the assertion that Penn State athletics had a culture problem. For those of us involved with Penn State athletics, we, we know just how untrue that is. And of course, we know just how absurd any reference to a lack of academic integrity is. To think that Penn State requires an academic integrity monitor is preposterous. No school graduated more student athletes over the past sixty-one years than Penn State. Finally, I too want to move forward, but not at the price of our proud past. So for us to move forward, we must build a bridge to that past rather than whitewash Penn State of that past. Too many of us in the Penn State community have a deep affection for Penn State because of the values and ideals shared with us by a man named Paterno. As I have said publicly, he had more integrity on his little finger than the leader of the NCAA has in his entire body. In time, I am confident that this undeniable truth will be confirmed as due process unfolds. I am also very confident that the Penn State community will rise to the occasion and show the world how truly great we are.
Thank you. Trustee Masser.
Thank you, Chair. Pete, I echo your earlier remarks and also fully support and trust our president. Furthermore, our board should find the wisdom to know the difference between the things we cannot change and the things we can change. We need to accept the things we cannot change. The events of November, the failures outlined in the free report, the unjust sanctions imposed by the NCAA. However, despite those harsh sanctions imposed on us, we are still allowed to play full schedule. We're still allowed to play in the Big Ten, and we're still allowed to be televised. Along with this, we need to focus on the bigger problems facing our university, the things we can change. We are in the process of implementing best-in-class governance and oversight changes that will be a model for other universities across the country. We need to focus on beginning the search for a new president that must be concluded by the middle of two thousand fourteen. We need to get on with rebuilding our brand. In order to do these things, we need to stop looking back. Moreover, we need to promote open debate. This is essential for our governing body to reach decisions that are in the best interest of the university and its stakeholders. The stakeholders are the students, the faculty, the staff, the alumni, and all the supporters of our institution. With that said, once our opinions are offered and a consensus is reached, we need to align as a board with one voice. The single voice is important so that we are able to convey our corporate authority to our stakeholders, that we as a board wish to do what we feel will better this institution. If dissent is heard after consensus, this further divides our institution, leading our stakeholders to become disillusioned with any decision that is made. We still have an institution with academic and athletic excellence. It is now time to align with our president, our students, faculty and staff, and our coaches. They all deserve our unified support. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee McComby.
Thank you. Um, my thoughts and comments have been stated in my recent communications to the trustees, including my letter on Friday, which stated to allow for sufficient time for the full and deliberate review that trustee Myers suggests, I will instruct my counsel to refrain from further prosecution of pending appeals or consideration of illegal actions. Since all of these communications have found their way into the public forum, I don't, I don't believe it's necessary to restate them all this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And trustee Myers, you made a bit of a statement before. Would you like to add anything?
I just want to emphasize again that I have great respect for Rod Erickson and, uh, all the other board members that we've heard from tonight. Uh, everybody's doing what, uh, they believe is in the best interest of the university. We've heard several of the trustees talk about a totally unfair and unjust the action by the NCAA is, and, uh, hopefully with time that, uh, will be, uh, changed. This is a great university, uh, in, in so many ways, and this is overshadowing all the great things that are happening, uh, throughout this university, uh, the cure for cancer and all the different things that, uh, are helping society and America and education and research in general. And if necessary, we get that message out, that we get, uh, so we, we need to unify ourselves, and we need to come together, and, and we need to tell the story of this great university going forward. And, uh, uh, so there are a lot of things here that, uh, we're very disappointed about, uh, and they were unfair and unjust, but we must move forward for the, for the greater good of Penn State University.
Thank you. Trustee Schaefer.
Thank you, Karen. I look back at how we achieved with this. We accessed the best outside counsel we could to get advice. The president, vice of the executive committee, under the threat of any leakage of confidentiality, and we'd be put in death penalty for several years. I fully support his decision and stand behind him a hundred percent. I really think that as trustee Meyer, or yeah, Masser said, that we really now have to concentrate on work on things that we can make change. Uh, we have to take the advice of counsel and move forward and also get back to what the mountainous work that's ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Silvis.
Well, thank you, Karen. Um, well, you know, Rod and Steve are giving the authority and goaded on the board's behalf, and to try to second guess him or say he could have or should have or done something, he got to get a better deal is just simple...
to get a better deal is just simply non-productive. So I want to publicly thank Rod for stepping up in this unprecedented time. I know you did the best you could against a foe looking for blood. We've got to move forward as a community, as a university. We can't continue to rehash and relive the past. It's not going to change. I did want to make a statement, though, about the NCAA's consent decree statement that Penn State's football program was held in higher esteem than the values of the institution or of higher education. Penn State's culture has always embraced academic success for all students, especially for athletes and all collegiate sports. Another institution's place on the field performance over academics, and Penn State did not. Exhibiting excellence on the field and classroom is and has always been the core value of Penn State. The NCAA goes on to make a statement that unprecedented sanctions were justified by fear deference to the omnipotent football program, fear or deference, and a culture of reverence for Penn State football. I'd like to encourage the NCAA to think about that statement in the context of their own organization's culture, creating a culture of fear, intimidation, judgment without appeal, clarification of facts, take or leave an attitude. It's going to create an imbalance of power that will eventually rock all the foundations of all universities and what we stand for. The question all universities have to ask is, what is the appropriate balance of power between the NCAA and the institutions they regulate? Is it ever appropriate to force institutions to give up our right to appeal and clarify facts that were basis for those sanctions? With that being said, I'll take the high road again and put all my support behind Rod's team to implement the sanctions in a manner that far exceeds all expectations. Penn State's always been a best-in-class institution. We'll show the NCAA that we are Penn State, just as Paul Sui's grandfather, Steve Sui, uttered in 1948 when SMU protested the playing of two black players, Wally Trippett and Danny Hoover, in the Cotton Bowl. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Strumpf.
Thank you, Karen. I fully support Rod Erickson, and given the difficult choice, his signing the consent decree. For those alumni and students and friends listening on this call, appreciate your anger, but anger is not a strategy for running a university. We have to move forward. We have to unite as a board, and I give my full support to Rod Erickson. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Sui.
Thank you, Karen. Sort of hard, we at the end of the alphabet, to say something that hasn't been said already. For trustee Silvis, Paul, that was my father, not my grandfather, and they're some very unique men at times, the history of our university. I think, I fully support Rod. I think it's obvious that he's had a very tough job, and he's done a great service to this university when we asked him to step up, so I unequivocally support him. I think, you know, I know it in our heart, in our DNA in this university, it's fortunes are history that we're going to be successful, because we are, we're going to continue to be successful. I only hope that we can now move ahead, and I'm ready to move ahead. I hope that our alumni, our students, our staff, and our fans will join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Thirma.
Madam Chair, in the interest of brevity, I'll just join my distinguished colleagues in expressing the strongest possible support for President Erickson and his leadership team, and the faculty, staff, and all the returning students. The President had to make some very hard, but necessary decisions under terrible circumstances, and I believe without any doubt, in my mind, that he acted at all times in good faith and with the best interest of the university at heart. And for that, I both admire him and support him. We need to be behind our leader, and our leaders, and our faculty, and our students. I urge us all to look forward as we approach this new school year. Our great university's important land-grant mission is paramount, and it's why we're all here. And it's what we need to focus on as we move forward, I hope, together. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Talafaro.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I wanted to thank Dr. Erickson and our Executive Committee for their leadership during these difficult times at Penn State. I believe everyone recognizes that Dr. Erickson was put in an extremely difficult position by the NCAA, and at that time, I truly believe he did what was in the best interest of the university. You know, we are one team. We have to support one another. With that being said, I don't agree with the NCAA when they say we have problems with our Penn State culture. Culture is defined as beliefs, behaviors, objects, and other characteristics common to the members of a particular group or society. One person does not create a culture. A group of people don't create a culture. It's the students, our professors, and our alumni that create the culture of this university. I put our culture against any school in the country. And we all support President Erickson, and I believe we're going to move forward and do great things. As we move forward, I'm fully certain the NCAA will witness what our school's culture is truly about. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great, thanks. And then last is trustee Timalas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just will be brief. I wanted to point out that I think it was very appropriate that we have this public meeting today. In fact, we, I believe, this is the first time that the public has heard the history of the discussions that have led up to this agreement with the NCAA, but I believe it was the third or fourth time the board has actually heard the chronology of events. Having said that, there's been a lot of discussion over the past couple of weeks about culture. I think we should remember that the Penn State culture, as great as it is, was best exemplified by those students that turned out last November, the thousands and thousands of students that turned out in the candlelight ceremony that showed what Penn State is all about. For that, I applaud the Penn State community, and it is for those students that we need to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And then trustee Hens, I think, was on but did not speak. Would you like to speak? Are you on?
Am I on? Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Okay. Well, I make it unanimous in endorsing President Erickson. We're so fortunate to have an experienced administrator to help us through this difficult period. I reflect back to a time when we were selecting presidents, and they looked very carefully at how the board conducts its business. And if we want Rich Poole to someday succeed Rod Erickson, we need to get our act together and act as... We're all going to have differences of opinion. With 32 members, I don't think it could be otherwise. But once a decision's made, I think it's important that we move together in the best, to the best future possible for Penn State. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Karen?
Yes?
Karen, this is Rod Erickson. I got cut off momentarily, just at the time you were coming to me.
Okay, thank you. You have some comments?
Just very briefly, I want to thank members of the board for your vote of confidence and your support as we move ahead now. It is time to move forward. We have students coming back to campus in a couple of weeks, and we do need to focus on the future. We need to focus on our core missions of teaching, research, and service, because these are the things that will continue to define us as a world-class university. And I will continue to work hard every day to see that our future is bright. I can't thank our wonderful faculty, staff, and students enough for their dedication to learning and discovery, and I admire alumni for the great work that they do every day to change the world for the better. We're going to be fine.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Rod. Okay, I'll just make very brief closing remarks, and I'd like to just end the meeting by addressing the emotional component of all that's happened to our university and to all of us, in whatever way we're associated with the university. Many of us don't agree with how Penn State is characterized by the press and multiple other parties have attacked on many fronts since November. I would ask all of you to think about why Penn State is or was so special to you. For me, it was my experience as a Title IX athlete where I learned about winning, losing, and teamwork on the playing fields at Penn State. For you, it might have been in a lab, it might have been a fraternity, a semester abroad, participating in son, or through a favorite professor. Whatever it is or it was, it probably hasn't changed very much since November. It's still there to connect. We need everyone to support Penn State and connect again now with the university, more than ever. The board and I, in conjunction with President Erickson and his leadership team, plan to move forward now with specific plans, not only to address the free report and the consent decree, but also the future of this great university. We'll be discussing those plans at our upcoming meeting in August, and we invite you to join us in that dark fog, too. As was already said, the students, faculty, and staff will be in full swing on all of our campuses soon. We need to get back to our main mission and educational objectives now. We need to ensure that the students we have at Penn State get a great education, and those that are thinking about attending Penn State in the future still want to do so. We need to move forward as a community, the Penn State community, which we are all so very proud to be part of. I'm extremely confident that all of the passion that we have for our university can be brought together to create the positive energy and momentum to move us forward together. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, we appreciate your joining with us this evening, and we believe that the best days for Penn State University are still ahead. Thank you very much.